Good morning. We now call this council meeting to order. We ask, if you have a cell phone, if you'd be so kind at this time to put it on silent, mute, or off at this time. Thank you so very much. We will be led in prayer by Madam Clerk, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Madam Clerk.
O God of might, wisdom, and justice, through whom authority is rightly administered, laws enacted, and judgment decreed, assist us, we beseech thee, that this city council may be conducted in righteousness and may be eminently useful to thy people over whom we reside. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk.
Councilors Williams.
Here.
Morgan.
Present.
West.
Present.
Roots.
Present.
Mayor Kirkland.
Present. Approve, move for the approval of minutes?
So moved.
I second.
Are there any questions? Madam Clerk.
Councilors Williams.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
West.
Yes.
Roots.
Yes.
Mayor Kirkland.
Yes. At this time, we open up the microphone for public comments on action items only. If you have public comments, we ask that you would go to the microphone, state your name, or your address, and your comments. Hearing and seeing none. Before we go into our resolutions, I do want to apologize, we at one point in time were going to have the opening of the time capsule that was found at Pulaski School. But we wanted to make sure that the school district was present as well, so we're going to do it at our next council meeting. Madam Clerk.
Resolution. Whereas, the following individual has requested a handicap parking zone. Number one, Katie L. Wilson, 820 West 11th Street, Chester, PA, 19013. And whereas, after a thorough investigation by the Department of Public Works, it has been determined the aforementioned individual has met all of the required criteria and has a need for said handicap parking zone. Now therefore, the Council of the City of Chester does resolve that it does hereby authorize the proper city officials to install a handicap parking zone in the 800 block of West 11th Street in the City of Chester.
So moved.
I second.
Are there any questions? Madam Clerk.
Councilors Williams.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
West.
Yes.
Roots.
Yes.
Mayor Kirkland.
Yes.
Resolution. The Council of the City of Chester does resolve that it does hereby amend Resolution number 5-2022, passed by Chester City Council on January 3, 2022, to read as follows: That it does hereby appoint the following individuals to the position of police cadets, Chester Police Department, Department of Public Affairs, effective January 3, 2022, at an hourly rate of $15 per hour on a per diem basis, not to exceed eight hours per day, five days per week, without benefits. Number one, Amanda Wilson, and number two, Ryan Shomo. Further, said police cadets shall attend the Delaware County Community College Police Academy and receive the required police certification.
So moved.
I second.
Are there any questions? Madam Clerk.
Williams.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
West.
Yes.
Roots.
Yes.
Mayor Kirkland.
Yes.
Resolution. The Council of the City of Chester does resolve that it does hereby ratify the appointment of Cherie Knight to the position of Building Compliance Monitor, Department of Public Affairs, for 37.5 hours per week, no benefits, effective January 31, 2022, with a 60-day probationary period at the salary as provided in the annual appropriation ordinance.
So moved.
I second.
Are there any questions? Madam Clerk.
Councilors Williams.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
West.
Yes.
Roots.
Yes.
Mayor Kirkland.
Yes.
Resolution. The Council of the City of Chester does resolve that it does hereby ratify the promotion of Matthew Hand to the position of Battalion Chief, Bureau of Fire, Department of Public Safety, effective January 31, 2022, with a 90-day probationary period at the salary range as provided in the annual appropriation ordinance.
So moved.
I second.
Are there any questions? Madam Clerk.
Councilors Williams.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
West.
Yes.
Roots.
Yes.
Mayor Kirkland.
Yes.
Resolution. Whereas, the City of Chester desires to adopt an employee handbook for city employees, and whereas, the employee handbook is intended to provide employees with information regarding policies and procedures of the city. Now therefore, the Council of the City of Chester does resolve that it does hereby adopt the City of Chester Employee Handbook for all of city employees. Further, this policy would take effect immediately upon the passage of this resolution.
So moved.
I second.
Are there any questions? Madam Clerk.
Councilors Williams.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
West.
Yes.
Roots.
Yes.
Mayor Kirkland.
Yes.
Resolution. The Council of the City of Chester does resolve that it does hereby authorize the proper city official to prepare a notice to be advertised for a public hearing to be held for the proposed amendment to Article 1327 entitled "Allowed Uses in Primarily Non-Residential Zoning Districts." Further, that it does hereby authorize the city clerk to advertise for the aforementioned notice.
So moved.
I second.
Are there any questions? Madam Clerk.
Councilors Williams.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
West.
Yes.
Roots.
Yes.
Mayor Kirkland.
Yes.
Resolution. The Council of the City of Chester does resolve that it does hereby amend Resolution number 225-2021, passed by Chester City Council on December 22, 2021, to read as follows: That it does hereby accept the award of a coastal zone grant funded by the Department of Environmental Protection, DEP, and National Oceanic and Atmospheric Administration, NOAA, in the amount of $60,000 to be used for engineering services for the design of a multi-use trail on Norris Street as part of the East Coast Greenway. Further, that it does hereby authorize Mayor Thaddeus Kirkland to execute any necessary documents for said grant. Further, said grant is continued upon final approval of the city solicitor.
So moved.
I second.
Are there any questions? Madam Clerk.
Councilors Williams.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
West.
Yes.
Roots.
Yes.
Mayor Kirkland.
Yes.
Resolution. Whereas, on March 25, 2020, Chester City Council approved the submission of a grant application to the Department of Conservation and Natural Resources Department for the Highland Avenue East Coast Greenway Connector Project. And whereas, at the time of submission, council authorized Nafis Nichols, who at the time of signing had the title of Chief Financial Officer, to electronically sign grant documents on behalf of the City of Chester. And whereas, on March 24, 2021, council approved the submission of a grant application to the Department for the Norris Street East Coast Greenway Connector, and designated Thaddeus Kirkland, who at the time of signing has the title of mayor, to electronically sign grant documents on behalf of the City of Chester. And whereas, the City of Chester desires to receive from the Department grants for the purpose of carrying out these projects. And whereas, the City of Chester has requested, if awarded, that both Department grant projects be combined. And whereas, the application packages include a document entitled "Terms and Conditions of Grant." And whereas, the City of Chester understands that the contents of the document entitled "Terms and Conditions of Grant," including appendices referred to therein, will become the terms and conditions of a grant agreement between the City of Chester and the Department if the City of Chester is awarded the grant. And now, therefore, the Council of the City of Chester does resolve that both grant applications may be electronically signed on behalf of the City of Chester by Thaddeus Kirkland, who at the time of signing has a title of mayor and the email address of T Kirkland at ChesterCity.com. If this official signed the grant application, electronic authorization prior to the passage of this resolution, this grant of authority applies retroactively to the date of signing. If the City of Chester is awarded the grant, the grant application electronic authorization signed by the above official will become the City of Chester/Department's executed signature page for the grant agreement, and the City of Chester/Department will be bound by the grant agreement. Any amendment to the grant agreement may be signed on behalf of the Department by the official, who at the time of signing of the amendment has the title specified in Paragraph 1, and the Department will be bound by the amendment.
So moved.
I second.
Are there any questions? Madam Clerk.
Councilors Williams.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
West.
Yes.
Roots.
Yes.
Mayor Kirkland.
Yes.
Resolution. The Council of the City of Chester does resolve that it does hereby grant permission and authorize the issuance of a road opening permit to PICO for the installation of new gas mains at the following location within the City of Chester in accordance with the documents on file in the city engineer's office. Number one, East 5th Street from Madison Street to Crosby Street. Further, said permit is contingent upon all work being performed in a manner that is satisfactory to city council and PICO's compliance with all of the following conditions as outlined by the city engineer. Number one, PICO performs a half-mill and overlay on the road openings exceeding 100 or three patches within 100. Number two, PICO provides appropriate traffic control measures to ensure continual operation of city streets. Number three, PICO obtains all required road opening permits from the city as well as a highway occupancy permit from PennDOT.
So moved.
I second.
Are there any questions?
Just, just one clarifying. On that Point One, PICO performs a half-mill and overlay on all road openings exceeding 100 feet, or three patches within 100 feet.
Correction. Do lead, no escort. Mm-hmm. Any other?
And I...
Councilwoman?
I just want to make sure that when we have these road openings, I know here along this roadway, we have the school that any residents or school, whatever, be notified prior to, you know, the work being done, because people are complaining that they're not made, they're not aware of when the work, roadwork is going to begin, and we need to let them know so that they will be prepared.
Are you asking for the city to let them know, or for the contractor, the PICO?
Well, the engineer, who's not here right now, but my Public Works Director can convey the information. I just want it to be a matter of record that that's what I'm asking for.
Okay. Madam Clerk.
Councilors Williams.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
West.
Yes.
Roots.
Yes.
Mayor Kirkland.
Yes.
Resolution. The Council of the City of Chester does resolve that it does hereby grant permission and authorize the issuance of a road opening permit to PICO at East 16th Street from Melrose Avenue to Ridley Avenue within the City of Chester. In accordance with the documents on file in the city engineer's office, the openings and measurements are as follows. Number one, 1.5-foot by 685-foot trench opening in paving. Number two, 54-three-foot by four-foot opening in paving. And number three, three-six-foot by eight-foot openings in paving. Further, said permit is continued upon all work being performed in a manner that is satisfactory to city council and PICO's compliance with all of the conditions as outlined by the city engineer.
So moved.
I second.
Are there any questions? Madam Clerk.
Councilors Williams.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
West.
Yes.
Roots.
Yes.
Mayor Kirkland.
Yes.
Resolution. The Council of the City of Chester does resolve that it does approve an order payment of a series of bills and refunds as prepared by the Department of Accounts and Finance, and as shown on expenditure approval list dated January 28, 2022, attached hereto and made a part hereof, subject to approval from the Department of Accounts and Finance.
So moved.
I second.
Are there any questions? Madam Clerk.
Councilors Williams.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
West.
Yes.
Roots.
Yes.
Mayor Kirkland.
Yes.
Okay. Bill Number One, on its first reading, today, 2/9/2022, an ordinance. An ordinance of the City of Chester, Delaware County, Pennsylvania, amending Article 1327 entitled "Allowed Uses in Primarily Non-Residential Zoning Districts" of the codified ordinances of the City of Chester, 1978, as supplemented and amended to revise subsection 1327.01c entitled "Institutional Semi-Public Uses," to change the W1 zoning district from permitted by right to not permitted, and repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances inconsistent therewith.
I move that we pass Bill Number One on its first reading.
I second that we pass Bill Number One on its first reading.
Are there any questions?
Just for the sake of clarity, because I had a question on this on Monday, what this does is it, and correct me if I'm wrong, somebody prohibits churches from going up below or between 291 and the riverfront. So that's just a slight change to the zoning codes.
Correct.
Okay, thanks.
Mr. Record.
It's only in the waterfront district, which is from Flower Street to Highland Avenue. The other portions of 291 south are not part of the waterfront.
All right, from Flower Street to Highland Avenue, from 291 to the river, we're prohibiting church, new churches.
Church and religious organizations.
And religious organizations. Thanks.
Thank you. Madam Clerk.
Councilors Williams.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
West.
Yes.
Roots.
Yes.
Mayor Kirkland.
Yes. Yes, yes, yes. Um, presentation. Swearing in. Hazing.
Let me get your thing back.
Can I have that? They coming in?
Uh, yes, we can. I get mine. On my, on my long table.
I have a bar?
I got it. That one. Go stand. Go stand.
Morning, everyone. Our first, uh, our first is a swearing in of apprentice firefighter Ryan Graff. He was kind of on the tail end of our last class, and we didn't get a chance to swear him in today. So I'd ask you to raise your right hand. I state your name.
I'm Ryan Graff.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
To do my duty as a firefighter.
Do my duty as a firefighter.
For the City of Chester Fire Department, to the best of my ability.
The City of Chester Fire Department, to the best of my ability.
Serve my commanding officers and fellow firefighters.
Serve my commanding officers and fellow firefighters.
With respect and dignity.
With respect and dignity.
And to serve the citizens of the City of Chester.
Serve the City of Chester.
With compassion.
With compassion.
Courage and integrity.
Courage and integrity.
And to uphold the laws and constitution of the United States of America.
To uphold the laws and constitution of the United States of America.
The State of Pennsylvania.
The State of Pennsylvania.
And the Charter of the City of Chester.
And the Charter of the City of Chester.
So. All right, our next one today is the promotion of Fire Captain Matthew Hand to the rank of Battalion Chief. And if I could ask you, Chief, if you'd like to sort of... I state your name.
I'm Matthew Hand.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
To do my duty.
To do my duty.
As a Battalion Chief for the City of Chester Fire Department.
As a Battalion Chief for the City of Chester Fire Department.
To serve my fellow officers.
To serve my fellow officers.
The fellow firefighters with respect and dignity.
The fellow firefighters with respect and dignity.
To serve the citizens of the City of Chester.
To serve the citizens of the City of Chester.
With compassion, courage, and integrity.
With compassion, courage, and integrity.
To uphold the laws and constitutions.
To uphold the laws and constitutions.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
The State of Pennsylvania.
The State of Pennsylvania.
And the Charter of the City of Chester.
And the Charter of the City of Chester.
So. Congratulations, Chief. I just want to take one minute and give Captain names, or Chief names, Chief Captain names, give him a round of applause. He certainly moved up the ladder here and ascended through the ranks practically. His first opportunity, he was a fire captain, and his first opportunity, he come up Battalion Chief here, and he took full advantage of that too. So we're in good hands, with Chief Hand. He commanded the ship on Saturday night, so welcome aboard, and I thank you for yourself.
I keep the brief, thank you, Mayor and Council, Commissioner Rigby for the opportunity. Whilst they mumble, but I have some of the people in my corner, you know, and I'll try to do my best for the city. Thank you, Commissioner Rigby, for coming.
Commiss, do you, you have representatives of the fire departments present?
We do. And Chief, if you'd like to introduce some of, I know we have Chief McGarvey from Lower Marion Fire Department is here today. We have Chief Frankhand from Pottstown Fire Department, he's here somewhere in the crowd today.
Evergreen? How many people you want?
We had Fire Marshal Jim McCoy from Lower Marion. My father, huge mentor of mine, but 45 years in the fire service. And I'd like to just acknowledge somebody that's not here, my grandfather, started in the fire service in 1954, no longer with us, but blessed that I came from a firefighting family, so.
Chief, are you married?
I am, and my beautiful wife, Kate. And my, and my father-in-law, Tom.
Good answer. Thank you, thank you, Commissioner, and thank you, ladies and gentlemen, and thank you, chiefs from other departments, we appreciate your presence here today in support of our firefighters, thank you so very much. Councilwoman?
I'd like to say good morning to everyone, and I'm so happy. I spoke to my, to my people, and I explained, tried to tell them how important it is to move up in life, to take extra classes or whatever issues you need to deal, because you never know what's going to happen in life. So the higher they can go, the higher they grow. So that's my message to my new people. Thank you.
At this time, we open up the microphones for public comments. If you have public comments, we ask that you would go to the microphone, state your name, your address, and your public comments. Oh, I'm sorry, before we do that, before we do that, we have a COVID report, Ms. King? Ms. King, let them, let them shut that door first.
According to the most recent reports, there have been 6,707 positive COVID cases reported in the City of Chester since the beginning of the pandemic. The number of weekly reported cases has decreased to 68. Fifty percent of Chester residents are fully vaccinated, and 60% have received at least one vaccine. The school age population continues to be a challenge. Only one in four youth are fully vaccinated in the city. Thirty-one percent of the youth have received at least one vaccine. We want to continue to encourage everyone five and older to get vaccinated, and anyone who is eligible to get their booster shot. Vaccines and booster shots are available to, are free and available to everyone. COVID PCR testing is available at Everest Urgent Care and Keystone First Wellness Center. We currently have vaccines and booster shots available at Chespen, Keystone First Wellness Center, and Everest Urgent Care, and they're also available at your local pharmacy. On February 17, we will be having a health fair with vaccines and booster shots in the community room of City Hall. For more information, please go to chestercovidinfo.org. Finally, March is Prostate Cancer Month, and we want to encourage all men to visit their primary care provider to get screened. Thank you, and Happy Black History Month.
Thank you, Ms. King. Now we open up the microphone for public comments.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Olivia Smith, 930 East 18th Street. I'm here this morning with the concern for the residents in the... for the residents in the nine hundred block of East Eighteenth Street. Um, across the street is Washington Park, and over the period of time, the tree limbs have just been falling because of the lanning, you know, lanning flies have destroyed the trees and have made them weak. And then with the different rains and water that has come, it has caused the trees just to fall. The concern of the residents in that block, because it is residential, the trees are very tall, that if another wind or rainstorm comes, it could possibly fall into the houses over there. Most of those houses over there are almost a hundred years old. They've stayed the taffs the time, but the trees are growing very tall. So I'm asking and strongly requesting that whoever's in charge of the parks, and I believe it might be councilman, um, Roots, to go over there and just look at the conditions of the trees, not only for the resident, that the playground is around the block. You know, children will play, and we don't want any of those tree limbs to fall. And you will see that there are some tree limbs that are still sitting on the ground. Now, I know last year, at the end of the year, that, that the men in the, uh, Department of Public Works did remove some of the tree limbs that have fallen, but more tree limbs are starting to fall. So out of concern of the taxpayers of that particular block, that's, that's, you will come over and look at the situation and, um, rectify the situation so that we won't have to, uh, experience anything that could possibly damage the properties in which they live in. Thank you.
Don't go away yet. That's the nine hundred block of East Eighteenth Street?
That is correct.
Is that the street, right across the street from the park?
The park is on the other side of the street. One side of the park is on the other side of the street. That is correct.
Okay.
Okay, because the ten hundred block of East Eighteenth Street, because of the boundary lines, it belong, belonged to Wharton University. So that's where the dividing line is.
All right, I promise you, I will get out there and-
Melrose Avenue. Just let you know.
Yes. Across from the old, well.
Across from Administration Building, right.
Gotcha.
So you say you're coming real soon with the-
Coming real soon. In fact, might be a good opportunity to let everyone know I have taken, taken, I was first taken on a tour of all the parks and playgrounds by my deputy, Dwayne Lee, which was great. Then I followed up to spend a little more time in the parks and playgrounds, made some observations. I can say that I've paid more attention to the playground equipment than I did the trees. So now that you've brought my attention to the trees over at Washington Park, I will go back and look at those, but that is an issue. We know that you mentioned lanning flies have just killed trees everywhere, and I know Chester's no exception. Uh, we are going to be doing a lot of work in parks and playgrounds coming up real soon, and definitely taking care of safety issues first. So, I'm glad you brought it to my attention because I hadn't considered trees at all. I'm just looking at broken playground equipment, you know, primarily because I want, don't want to see kids get hurt.
Right.
But, uh, I will definitely take it upon myself to go up on the nine hundred block of East Eighteenth Street, see the conditions of the trees. There are some other parks that I did notice are, there's limbs just, just laying there, big, big trunks that have to be removed, you know, some way, somehow. So I, I will address that. Thanks.
Okay, and just to let you know, that park is the home of Bambi and the raccoons and the turkeys and the squirrels and the cats. So they all live up in there, so I want them to be safe also, because, um, that's their habitat. I mean, I can show you some pictures of Bambi and all the family members that come out frequently to eat some of the shrubbery across the street at the neighboring houses. So if we could have a squirrel crossing sign or, um, I mean, I've actually seen that in media, squirrel crossing sign and deer crossing sign and, you know, thank you.
Well, at least you're not asking for small game hunting season.
No, I'm not.
That's out of my purview.
I don't, I don't, possums and all, I mean, they all live there. I mean, it's really interesting to see if we could have a, one of them things called, um, that looks down on things. You could see, you know, mind you of the Disney characters of all the animals playing in the brush.
Yeah, it's, it's easy to miss because when you go by Washington Park, it looks like the most beautiful playground we have in the city. So it's, it's easy to lose sight of the things that may be wrong. So, thank you as a citizen, as a neighbor in that area to, to bring that to our attention.
You're welcome.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Beverly L. Harris, and I live at nine two five John Street, Chester, Pennsylvania. And I'm coming to ask the question about all of the employees that have been laid off and not called back. I don't, um, I know all of us don't, I know, I can speak for myself, that I don't have a website. I don't go on the website like I should. But I feel as though that when there's a job available, that we should be the first, we, because I wasn't an employee here, should be offered a job. I'm still laid off, haven't heard nothing. I did try to come back. I was working with the, uh, crossing guards. I, um, asked to be called if I could come back. I would even come back as a part time. Never heard anything back. And I don't want to slight anybody from working, but I do think whoever's in charge of bringing us back, and I think it's the receiver, if I'm not mistaken, and I hope that he gets his message, that he should think about the ones that have been here a long time and working for the city, love the city, and will do all they can for the city. Thank you.
Ms. Beverly, hang around. I got something, well, just hang around.
Okay.
All right.
Okay, thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Hi, I'm Anita Littleton, three three zero West Ninth Street, from Chester, PA. Um, I actually-
What's your address, please?
Three, three, zero, West Ninth Street.
Thank you.
All right. I actually have a couple, a couple of questions, but one of my main concerns, um, is the image of our city. I know I heard the mayor and councilwoman Wes talk about, you guys do drive, you drive around the city often. I want to know what is the city's plan to deal with the illegal dumping that continues to sit idle in spots around our city? One in particular, I believe it's Palmer Street, between Second and Third Street, there is a tire, used tire outlet. I was told that there are cameras installed there, uh, but apparently the tires are, um, covering the camera. I wanted to find out what was that financial investment of the city with the cameras there, who monitors that and if it's being monitored. But basically, what are we going to do about all of this junk that continues to sit here? Like, I'm talking about months and months. And in particular, what saddens me the most and many other residents of Chester City is one of the most important institutes here in this city, and that is our public educational facilities. If you notice, across the street from Chester Hut, there's been an abandoned, broken-down house that's been there for years. Every day, our children have to walk to school and see these sites that are not only, um, a hazard to our health mentally, you know, and just the, the image as a whole. And there's a lot of us here in Chester City that really cares about how this city looks. We know that this is a part of even the economic growth, you know, not only the crime, but the image is very important. And so there are plenty of spots that are still idle. I know myself personally and many other residents would love to participate fully with this council, with getting the city cleaned up. But I just want to know what is the plan? Because we continue to see these sore eye spots, abandoned buildings, you know, lots that are full of trash, and it is really embarrassing as a city resident, and I'm hoping that it's embarrassing as the council here. But what are we going to do about this issue that continues to plague us? Because it's not just a simple issue. This is a health issue, okay? A, a serious health issue mentally. You know, our, our kids, if you don't know it or not, our kids are really suffering from this. Every institute here in Chester City, educational, there is some type of ice or abundance of trash that every day our kids have to walk to these junky alleys and look at this mess, and I guess say, this is just the way it's gonna be. And I don't want our kids to be walking around here thinking that that's really okay, that that's the image, um, that's okay for them to live in. And so that's my question. I've addressed this out publicly before, but I just want to know, does the city actually have a real plan to deal with all of this illegal dumping here in Chester City? That was the first question, but I'll, that's enough right there. And also the streets, I'm sorry, I don't know if you guys drive these streets, whose, these streets are, I'm afraid that some of these streets are gonna cave in. Uh, they're really in bad condition too. So I don't know if that's, I know that's probably an employee issue with people, but, you know, safety, there's a lot of the streets that are very bad here in Chester City. Um, and we, we're still witnessing, uh, contractors that come into the city, who's responsible to follow up to make sure that they're doing their due diligence and leaving the city at least in a halfway decent position? They dig up these streets and the streets are terrible. You would think that a child or some kid did the work. So there's no follow-up, it seems like, with a lot of the, uh, contractual positions that are taking place here in Chester City either.
Um, good morning, Ms. Littleton, and thank you for your questions. Um, first of all, I want to say, just like you, we're residents and we live here too. So we see what you see. Um, illegal, illegal dump sites. We do have a problem with that, but I have two of my staff members, uh, here, uh, who are in charge of the, um, Streets Department, and we go out and address the illegal dump site, sites. The problem is that it continues to happen. We have people coming in from contractors who come in from other areas and they're dumping in out-of-the-way places. Now, what we're doing to address the problem, we do have a program where we're going to place cameras in those areas where we have the most problems. Uh, we're also addressed, we'll address it with, um, the proper lighting. We have a plan and a program for that. So lighting, cameras, and then, um, this, um, men in, men in the Streets Department, we're constantly cleaning up those illegal dump sites, but unfortunately, it just keeps happening. That's why we continue to see it. Um, bulk trash, we're working out something. We have a plan that we're working on where we're going to maybe have to contract that out to get some help with that. So we do have a few different variables that we're looking at to address that. And as far as the, um, abandoned properties and what have you, we know that we have a lot of abandoned properties, but, um, that's, that's something that we're all looking at. And, uh, I don't know, um, with, that's not my department, you know, with the abandoned houses and what have you, but, uh, with the illegal dumping, the bulk trash, and, um, what you, what I've seen with our regular trash pickup, like recycling and the, um, regular trash, it's gotten a lot better because we're, um, we have a new supervisor with JP Mascara, and, um, that, he, he and his staff have been working diligently to make sure that the trash gets picked up, and it's gotten better. Not perfect, but it's gotten a lot better, and we can tell because we're not getting as many phone calls on that.
Okay, could, could I ask you to address the cameras that were already installed on Second Street where, I'm quite sure you're aware of the tires. You know where I'm talking about the tire. I went to personally talk to tire companies, because as a resident, I'm saying, this is unacceptable.
Mm-hmm.
We don't want to live in a city like this. You can't do business like this in Chester City. So are you familiar with the tire outlet there? And there's cameras that suppose have already been installed there, and they know that the cameras are covered up. So does there anybody managing those cameras? And again, what was the financial investment that went into that camera that's just sitting there idle, covered up by these tires?
So, well, well, Mike, you, you said that the cameras are covered up. I mean, when we put these cameras out here, we're putting them at locations that are high, that are high enough and are visible enough so that we can be able to see. So what do you mean by covered up?
So, so then you guys, so then you guys are seeing the issue then that's happening?
I'm not saying that we're seeing the issue.
Okay, well-
But I'm asking, what do you mean by covered up? Is it tires covering the camera?
Yeah, the tires are like, that's sky high. I mean, your tires-
They're like fifteen feet? Yeah, what's the location?
Between, I believe it's Palmer Street, Second and Third and Palmer. I believe that's the street. I mean, I'm gonna just double check it, but it's, it's a spot that you-
So tires are ten to fifteen feet in the air, to the sky, covering the camera?
I'm not sure. So you, so, okay, well, here's my question. If that is the case, because they, they told me, the tire people told me the cameras were there, then other residents that knew that you guys talked about that. My question is, who's monitoring that? Nobody's catching anybody yet? Because those tires has been there for a while, and there's more. I've been monitoring that situation. I said, I'd go there, sit there myself. I talk to these guys, let them know, this is not how we want our city to look. If you're doing business like that, we don't want you doing business here in Chester City, okay? Because this is not where you dump your tires. So if there are cameras there, why haven't anybody got caught yet? And why are the tires still sitting there in that alleyway along with all, a lot of the trash and junk that has been there for a very long time? This is well over a month.
So what I would say is, um, we will look and, to check and see if it's a camera there. And the camera that we own, that the City of Chester owns and monitors, we'll check and see if there's a camera there, because it's possible that it might not be a camera or it might be an old camera. So we'll check into that. You said Second and Third and Palmer. Um, and we, and yes, if there's cameras that the city has put out, and we've put out a good amount of cameras over the last two, three years, and we're going to be putting out more cameras, but, uh, the Public Affairs and the Public Safety Department, they do monitor those things, and you might not see it, but we have caught a good amount of illegal dumpers throughout the City of Chester, and we continue to do that. Um, and, and I think we all know this, but the city has been dumped with illegal dumping for not just this year, last year, but this has been going off for quite some time. So we've been catching a good amount of people. Uh, at times, it's in the, uh, two AM, three AM that we're catching these individuals, so not everybody sees them. Um, but we'll most certainly make sure that we go out there and check to see where this camera is, and then check back with Public Safety to see if we have access to it.
And it's not just this issue. Again, what can we do as residents? That's what I'm asking. We are tired of our city looking like a duck yard.
I, 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 I-
Well, I know Mayor, um, Mayor Kirk, if you're gonna say that you disagree with how the city looks, there are a lot of residents here in Chester City that does not believe that Chester is upholding the image that it could hold.
Ms. Littleton.
Okay. Yes, sir.
You know, you can call a child a certain name for so long that the child will believe that he's that certain negative name. We've cleaned up behind your alleyway. We did that. You remember that?
I cleaned up behind my alleyway, but yeah, it's, yeah, I mean-
I'm just saying, we, we've cleaned up-
What's your, what's your relevant point with the issue about our city?
We've cleaned up, we've cleaned up behind your alleyway. These men and women work extremely hard to keep our city clean. I don't believe our city is filthy and, and all that. We have our, we have some of our issues, yes, but I don't believe our city is as filthy and as dirty, because I don't believe our residents are as filthy and as dirty as some people might say.
That's not my, you, you're, you're, I'm not sure where you, what's, what you're leading to, Mr. Mayor. As a concerned resident that has been here for twenty-two plus years, I'm willing, as well as many more people in this city, like myself, willing to work with this council to see how we can clean up the image of our city. For us to drive around this city and say that our city is a clean city-
I didn't say that.
And we, well, that it doesn't have issues. I mean, this, this is an issue that has been going on far too long. It is just unacceptable.
One of the things, one of the things in, 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 it was said before, and it seems like no one can ever give credit where credit is due. When we were going through this pandemic and it was a mess, yes, it was a mess. It was a total mess. But now, trash is being picked up on time. You don't see garbage lying around all the time. Bulk trash is being picked up. We're doing things, and it seems like there's no credit when you do right, when you clean up, but there's a lot of complaining, primarily from you, whenever there, whatever you think.
That's your opinion, sir.
That is my opinion.
Okay, because I just, I just think the bulk trash people, uh, that they do in that but-
But that is my opinion.
We've had this problem before the pandemic. We had schools that had grass that was unkept, and we had rodents and rats running around our community well before the pandemic. I understand the pandemic, but this goes before the pandemic, and I do specialize in giving credit to where credit is due.
We'll, we'll take care of it.
Okay, my question is that we have to come up with a real plan, because the image of this city matters.
We'll take care of it.
You guys should, should care about your image as councilmen of the city, okay? And we're willing to work with you. It's not, nobody's here to, we're willing to work with you.
Ms. Littleton, I got something.
Okay?
Lastly, um-
But it's just disgusting. Our children are tired of this.
Ms. Littleton, I'm sure this mayor and council, uh, does most certainly, thoughtfully, uh, make sure that we want to keep our community clean, and we want the residents to do the same thing. And I know that they, they do as well. They take great ownership and responsibility of their neighborhood and their front porch or their front doorstep. But I did have a question, because you talk about the streets are so bad. Um, obviously, uh, we, we know that we're in the winter season, the winter months with the- Um, obviously, uh, we, we know that we're in the winter season, the winter months with the, the, the snow and the different type of weather elements, um, that we endure. Um, you know that the rock salt, of course, at times can tear up the streets. Um, and the Public Works Department, I won't speak too in-depth for that department, but I know that they have rock salt, and I know that they put it out during the snow season, and I know it tears up the roadways. And uh, once this snow season kind of goes away, we'll most certainly be out here making sure that we fill up those potholes. But it sounded like you specifically was talking about a project that someone did on a street, and they didn't repave or, uh, the street properly since, or when they, when they got there. Is there a particular street that you're speaking about?
There's many of those. I mean, I, I have plenty of, if you guys would like for me to download all the pictures, the covers that I have to present to you on a private matter, I can do that. My question was just, who follows up with these people that are granted all these large amounts of money to do work in our city, but they're not being held responsible to do a job? People come in here with the mindset that this is Chester City, we're gonna do what we want to do. We don't care about the residents, we don't care how we live this thing. I, I hear the conversations, unlike you, Mr. Mayor, I talk to these people that come in here and do work to say, listen, I don't care what you think or what you heard, you need to respect this city and the residents that live here, okay? And the dollars that you're getting in your pocket to do this kind of work. So my question is just, on, on a, a, a level of, of administration, who follows up to hold these people accountable?
We have inspectors.
Okay.
We have an engineer here from the Streets Department. Well, he services the entire municipality. And we have our Public Works Director and also our Supervisor of Streets. And um, Mr. Gallant, I know that we hold the contractors to a certain standard when they've done their work and they go to replace the street.
Yeah, um, I can, I can answer some of the questions about the street work that's going on. There's, there is a lot of infrastructure work that's going on right now. You have PICO, Stormwater Authority. When they do their work, they dig up the roadway, and it's called a settlement period when they, after they lay the pipes. So you may have a 90-day settlement period, so the road's gonna sit unfinished for approximately 90 days. And then after the 90 days, they do their final restoration. Uh, we have received complaints about certain areas, we do call the contractors. Uh, LNI has inspectors. LNI recently took over the inspection component of streets uh, when, I guess sometime during the pandemic. So they do have inspectors out there. Um, and it's just, what you're dealing with is a lot of infrastructure work that has a settlement period, and we do follow up with the contractors. If there are any specific complaints, uh, you can bring them down to Window A, and Kim will great report it to Rodney or myself, and we can also help, you know, coordinate with the contractors as well. But we do receive numerous complaints, and we do follow up.
So you guys are admitting there is an issue with that? Because I have, I have made complaints, I've called you directly, uh, the issue is sometimes we don't get folks back.
Is this, is this over at Ninth Street?
Sir, this is going with, I've been here for 22-plus years, okay? So these are issues that are happening recently, and, and the councilman have already admitted that they know that these people are coming in here, and this is, this is, we all should be.
And we go after them. We all should be vigilant about that.
Exactly, and I'm just saying, you know, I mean, people are getting paid, and, and to be honest, you know, the trash is doing better, but they need to work on that discipline because they haven't managed it yet. People are just tired of calling in and, and repeatedly standing, saying it over and over again, stimuli is not going to be in a result. So we're gonna continue to work hard, but um, there is these issues, as you stated yourself. This doesn't happen in a lot of the deals. I see how they do contract work, I see how they communicate with the residents. You know what's gonna happen, you are respected as a resident of that city, okay? There's a plan of action that takes place, but that doesn't seem to happen here in Chester City. I personally talk to contractors who understand, and I've heard what they say here, okay? And some of them feel like they have a red ticket to come in this city and do what they want to do, as if they're accountable to nobody.
Well, that's not the case.
Okay, so I do my job in talking to contractors.
But that's not true.
Thank you, Ms. Littleton.
Not true.
We'll, we'll follow up, Ms. Littleton.
If you want to talk to me personally, I will direct you to the names and phone numbers of the people that I've talked to who have done work in Chester City, and I am willing to do that, a councilwoman, okay?
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Littleton, we'll follow up.
Hello.
We'll follow up.
Mayor. Um, uh, I was out, I go out all the time, riding around, and I go in the trash. And when I go in the trash, they're here, it is, it's the people right here in Chester. Some of them that's putting their trash out there, because I got, I went this weekend. I got pictures, I got names, and the houses that they cleaned out and put the trash down here in Chester. So, and, and the vandit houses, the vandit houses, the people left them. You want to blame us, it cost us money. They left them.
Councilman, council, excuse me, Ms. Littleton, Ms. Littleton, Ms. Littleton, Ms. Littleton. Ms. Littleton, Ms. Littleton, uh-uh, uh-uh. Ms. Littleton, okay, thank you. Commissioner, you got a report to make? Are there any ports to be made today?
No, I've got something to say.
Okay. Uh, this council, members of council.
Yes. Um, I want to give an update on some things in the, in the finance area. Uh, Accounting Department of Tax Office. Uh, as you all know, um, it's that time of the year for, uh, the current tax bills to get mailed out to our homeowners and residents. Um, the city of Chester doesn't necessarily work off a calendar year for current and delinquent tax bills. Uh, so this week, this Friday, is the last time that you can pay your 2021 tax bills at the base rate. Um, after this Friday, uh, those will be turned over to E-Collect, who will be our delinquent tax collector for all tax bills of 2021 and moving forward. Uh, so we will have their contact information on our website and on social media as well, uh, so you can find out how to pay your, uh, tax bills once they become delinquent, uh, after this, uh, this week. Tax, 2022 tax bills will be mailed out roughly about the second or third week in March. Uh, we are having, uh, some small issues as we're, we are integrating a new financial software. Uh, so our tax bills are, will be intended to be mailed out within the second or third week of March, uh, for 2022. Uh, as well with those tax bills, um, you can also pay online. Um, so last year, we, was the first year we had that online, that, uh, credit or debit card type of feature, uh, internal and external, whether it's the website or if you come in person to pay. Uh, so you'll see that information on the tax bills as well, of the many and various ways that you can make your 2022, uh, payments. And the last thing I wanted to say about job postings, uh, there was a comment, um, in the public comments about job postings, but we are going to do a better job of making sure that we get all of the opportunities here within the city of Chester out to those former employees and out to any resident that I think they are, or believe that they are eligible or have the, the proper certificates or education background to fulfill the job opportunities that we have here in the city of Chester. As you, as you know, um, during the pandemic, we laid off quite a bit of employees, uh, roughly forty to fifty employees, and we are trying to do our best to get as much of that complement back as soon as possible. So, uh, there will be some job postings on our social media, on our television sites. Uh, we're looking to do a job fair and maybe a virtual job fair as well. Uh, and this includes positions within every department, Public Affairs, uh, Public Works, um, LNI, Health Department, Police Department, Fire Department. Uh, so we, the city of Chester is going to be offering a wide range of opportunities to our residents, of course. And uh, so just be on the lookout for all of those, uh, those jobs. Thank you, that's it.
Councilman?
Yeah, I've got a couple of things. I guess those of you who are watching this on Facebook, you're already following the, the city's Facebook page, and you saw a couple of days ago, a announcement of a company called Pathstone Corporation. They've come to the city of Chester, they're doing other cities around, but they're particularly interested in the city of Chester in identifying 18 to 24-year-old individuals to take classes at Delaware County Community College for free. They will qualify you, sign you up, I think for the first couple of weeks, they're gonna drive you out there. And once you complete the program of study, which are the trades, uh, HVAC, uh, I can't even remember all the trades, but there's a, a long list of them, you can see them on the site. I highly encourage you to connect with these people. Eric Bain is our Executive Director of the Chester Workforce Development Center. He came to me after Pathstone came to him and the mayor. Uh, the question to me was, do we have space here in City Hall for them to set up to do recruiting? The answer was overwhelmingly yes, and I believe, Mayor, correct me if I'm wrong, they're looking to set up on Fridays.
That's right.
On Fridays, uh, ongoing Fridays to do recruiting. So I'm sure we're gonna repost, uh, those times and dates on our Facebook page. Please look out for that, 18 to 24-year-olds. We go to high school for free, it's called public school, and then college usually, the, the money is a deterrent. Here, you can go to Delaware Community College for free. They are taking 18 to 24-year-olds for free. Um, two more things here. Oh, maybe three more. Congratulations to the Vittles Food Court for reopening this weekend. Uh, they brought in a organization called, I, I hope I get this right, Everybody Eats, yes. And they got some press on, uh, I think Channel 6 covered them. So we're really excited to see that space open back up. I know they're gonna be open on weekends, I'm not sure what the full schedule is. It's located on Sprole between Eighth and Ninth. It's a beautiful space. Go in there and support those food vendors. Youth baseball is coming back to Chester this summer. If you have a nine-to-11-year-old, please, who wants to play baseball, who wants to learn baseball, please contact me at sroots@chestercity.com. Uh, this is a brand-new opportunity, a outfit that does skills training. Uh, they're up and down the Mid-Atlantic coast, but they have indoor facilities out in West Chester. Mayor, they are willing and have offered to take our kids and put together a travel team this summer, an all-star travel team. They're gonna train them, outfit them, equip them at no cost to the kids or their parents. I can't say it's a done deal until I get the kids. So if I don't have the kids to present to this program, this deal won't happen. So please, let's bring baseball back to the city. That's a great opportunity that we should not squander.
You get those parents, you get those kids.
I've talked to a couple of the youth programs already, and, and they're getting me the kids. They're already in touch with the kids, so I'm, I'm pretty confident that we're gonna make this happen. Uh, an article was published last Friday in the Delaware County Daily Times. I just gave, gave an update of parks and playgrounds as I see it. And I asked people who ever wanted to join in and help us in the effort of updating our parks, cleaning up our parks. I got some interesting responses. The one that really touched me, though, was a young lady who says that she has a handicapped child who loves parks, but doesn't have access to any of the equipment, you know, at our parks. So we're gonna certainly, uh, address that issue too. We are already gonna address broken limbs, broken equipment, we're gonna keep the grass cut. We may even have to put some tape around some of these playgrounds and keep, keep you off of them, because they're just not spaces which children should play. But I'm, I have to honestly say, I was kind of blind to the handicapped issue. So I'm sure all of us here, uh, would be ready, willing, and able to, to address that, even if it's just that playground in her area.
So, Mayor, before you continue on, you're right, that is a, I want to say, I guess it's some form of an issue that it has been, there hasn't been a playground outfitted to some degree, from my knowledge of, uh, handicapped, um, individuals or youth. Uh, Councilwoman Williams, um, last year in 2021, yes, um, had plans to facilitate or, uh, a playground in the city of Chester for handicapped youth and, uh, for those end, and for autistic kids as well. Um, so that is something that, uh, Councilwoman Williams was working with, with, uh, CD, not CDVG, sorry, CETA, uh, with the CDVG funds and Lisa Gaffney and, and Joanne. So, uh, those are things that has started, but definitely should continue to process the, the conversations, because, um, it's a need, that most certainly, yeah.
And, um, Mr. Gallant has something to add.
Can I just, can I just address the handicap situation? So any new playground.
Don't leave that room.
That, that was put in, uh, since, I would say, 2012, since I was here. All those playgrounds are ADA compliant, and they meet current ADA guidelines. I just want to make sure that that's clear and in the public.
Yeah.
There may be some older playgrounds that need to get retrofitted to be ADA compliant, but all new playgrounds have the adequate facilities per the current codes to meet ADA requirements. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. And I was more so talking about the autistic type of parks that they have in other areas in Delaware County that we've been looking at doing here in the city of Chester. So, um, and as far as the, the park upgrades and safety and things like that, those are conversations that we definitely should have. We do, we have some plans that we begin to create using some of the CDVG and, uh, the American Rescue Plan dollars to get those, uh, parks back to its, uh, normal use as far as safety and, and playground equipment as well.
Yeah, so certainly, you know, I apologize, being the new guy here, I just haven't got caught up on everything. There's a lot of stuff going on in the city. With regard to you, Ms. Littleton, I will say that I sat in one meeting, and, and you and I have kind of battled that bulk trash thing, you know, in the past, and I've had some recommendations and suggestions. I can say to your question of what are the plans? I've sat in a meeting or two where plans are being made to handle the illegal bulk trash. What the mayor was speaking to was our legal bulk trash. When a resident says, I have a couch for something to take out, we're doing a lot better on that with, with our city employees. But the illegal bulk trash is a tough job. My solution, or my suggestion to a solution was, let's stop making, or let's turn illegal bulk trash into something legal. I think if people knew that they could legally take their materials that they're now dumping in parks and back alleys someplace legal at little to no cost, with no, uh, no worry that a camera's gonna catch them or a resident's gonna catch them doing something illegal, that they would do it. I was quite impressed with the options that are being laid out. So just be a little patient, I'm following up on these two. There are four or five options that, you know, we're working on as a city. City Government, Public Works, The Receiver, which were quite creative, some stuff I hadn't even thought of, that is going to address illegal bulk trash. And the whole concept is, stop making it illegal. People are coming down here dumping, but if they knew they could dump it legally, I think people would do it. So that's always been my solution. I was really happy to sit in meetings and see that I, you know, my thought wasn't, uh, a thought that's out there on its own. Uh, it's going to be, it is being addressed in just a matter of time. You're gonna see some plans come out that I think you'll, we'll all be happy with.
But you know, we just know you have a whole entire city that's willing to back up this, the city council, and all that you are part of. There's over 90% of the residents here who want a clean city. So don't forget about residents, we really care about the image, and we're here to help in any way we can. If the invitation is ever presented to us, to come and help with this, we'd be so glad. Thank you, that sounds really good. I'm, I'm willing to do my part.
Hold on, hold on, hold on.
Wait, 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 wait.
Hold on, hold on, Mark. We're not gonna continue to, no, hold on.
Mr. Hold up.
We're not gonna continue to engage. No, you didn't say anything wrong. We're trying to just get comments out.
This.
You guys can get together after the meeting.
This was a conversation, I asked for counsel if they had closing comments.
Yes.
Okay, my apologies, I'll talk after the meeting, thank you.
And to your point, what can residents do? It's not a matter of sitting in meetings, but be the eyes and ears for us. You know, we're just five, we're just a few people. So if people see stuff going on in the neighborhood, don't be silent. Put a phone call to the police department. Uh, okay, see, we're on the same page.
Any, any further comments from council? Okay. Um, let me just say this real quickly, um.
I just wanted to make one statement quick, can I, Mayor?
Sure.
This is for Councilman Root. If you need another location, I'm Derek Phillips, Executive Director of Boys and Girls Club of Chester. If you need another location for those youth from 18 to 24, so they can fill out their applications and go to Delaware County College, please, uh, reach out to me so we can offer another opportunity or another location, uh, for those individuals, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, if there are no more further comments, let me, I'll close out by saying this. Um, there are a number of, um, ideas on the table when it comes to, uh, cleanliness of our community, bulk trash, uh, illegal dumping. There are a number of initiatives on the table. Um, I think, what I know, I, I, when someone says the city, um, is troubling to me, simply because I know the entire. it's troubling to me, simply because I know the entire city is not filthy. I know that. I wrote down a few, I wrote down some areas, but I won't even go over them. I know that there are persons in this community that take very good care of their communities. I know that there are children who get involved and take good care of their community. I know there are different groups in this community that come together and partner with the city to help take care of the city. And then I also know that there are persons, I mean, there's some things you just get tired of, and that's not the city, but it's Penn Dot, for example, Curlin Street Onramp. Every time it's cleaned, it's trashed again, each and every time. But as I said before, these men and women work very hard to do their best. It's a mindset. It's a mindset, a mindset that says, I'm gonna do my part to make sure my community is clean and my community is safe. To Ms. Bev, I want to say this. I resent the fact that The Receiver says at an MFRAC meeting to folks, please come and apply for these jobs here in Chester City Hall. I resent it. And the reason I resent it is because I personally believe he's being divisive. He's putting Chester folk against Chester folk. We just came through a pandemic. And going through this, this pandemic, unfortunately, we had to lay off a number of persons. Lay off. They didn't retire, we didn't fire them. We laid them off in hopes of bringing them back. Some of them still have their, their belongings at the desk here in City Hall, with the clear understanding that they were coming back. So when I hear The Receiver, who makes sure that he has enough people to work with him, enough people on his staff, say to Chester residents, I want you to go take the job of another Chester resident, I resent that. Right now, Celeste Toodles, Ms. Elise Elam, Ms. Drusilla Freeman, Mr. Ben Wilson, Mr. Thomas White, Mr. Fred Green, Ms. Lisa Dennis, Ms. Jane Brown, Ms. Beverly Harris, Mr. Nasir Leach, Mrs. Janice Lammens, Mr. Darren Laws, Mrs. Harriet Ward, Mr. Darryl Jones, Ms. Kim Long, Ms. Gina Saunders, and probably more. These are city workers who gave their sweat, tears, and blood. And some of them have been here for quite some time. The Receiver is now reaching out to other folks to replace them, and this mayor will not stand for it. If I have to call you personally and call all these people personally, because we want them back first before anybody else, these folks need to come back. These are Chester residents. This Receiver, and I'll say it again and again, he rewards his friends with jobs. Talking about economic development, something that we've already started downtown Chester, that we've already started when this city, when this downtown was dormant. Now he's gonna give another group of his friends jobs and encouraging folks to come and say, we're gonna build, do this economic development move downtown. We are already doing that. The goal of the, the purpose of Receiver-ship is to help us with our finances, not run city government. Not to run our city government and to be divisive. And we, I know for me, I am no longer standing by and allowing that to happen. I don't have time for all these Zoom meetings. I don't have time for all these, this, this mess. What I have, what we have time for is to get work done in our city. That's what we have the work, time to do, get the work done in our city. And so we will be fighting for our residents, and we'll be fighting for our employees to come back. Thank you. I will. Thank you. This meeting is now adjourned.